Are you ready? It's 6:32. We will call to order the Planning Commission meeting from Monday, April 14th, 2025. We'll have a pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Feng Li, please.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jackie, can you please call the roll today?
Yes, Chair. Chair Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Chair Krappman.
Is absent this evening.
Commissioner McMorris.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
And Commissioner Carney.
Here.
Thank you.
Tonight's meeting is live streamed on Cable Channel 3 and all our online platforms. To prevent overlapping comments, each commissioner will be called upon to speak. The first item tonight is a public hearing. This is a time that's set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items that are not on the agenda but are within our purview. It's understood that if you do come to speak, the commission can't comment on your public comments unless or until an item is on a future agenda. So there are public speaker cards in the back as you walked in for the public comment period for this point, at this time, and for any other public comment period during the meeting tonight. So is there anybody who would like to speak tonight? Okay, thank you. Jackie, we do have one?
Chair, that one is for item 3B.
3B, okay. So did we get anything for regular public comment?
No, Chair, we didn't.
Okay, seeing none, then we'll close the public hearing. And go to the consent calendar? Excuse me? Okay, thank you. Okay. We'll go to the consent calendar, which is the minutes of the February 10th, 2025, Planning Commission agenda, Planning Commission meeting. So... Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? And do you have any concerns? Or can we have a motion to approve? Yes?
Public comment, please.
On the minutes? Oh, yes. Is there any public comment on the minutes tonight? Seeing none, thank you. Can we have a motion to approve the February 10th, 2025 minutes, please?
Change?
Yeah, I noticed there's just one error and minor error in item 3. Discussions, right under discussion, second sentence, he suggested the city council would consider. I think that should be should consider.
So noted, Commissioner McMorris.
So a motion to approve then with the one adjustment, right? Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Chair Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner McMorris.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Abstained. I was absent.
And Commissioner Carney.
Yes.
So the vote is three, yes, one abstention, and the motion passed.
All right. Tonight, we have several public hearing items. And before we begin them, I'll ask Planning Commissioner, Planning Manager, to start to go over the public hearing procedures for tonight.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Members of the Planning Commission, copies of tonight's agenda are available on the city's website at www.sangabrielcity.com and also on the table that is by the entrance. As mentioned, if you wish to speak on an item this evening and are not the project applicant, please fill out a speaker card and submit it to the recording secretary, which is Jackie this evening. And cards are available on the table that is by the entrance. Please write down the item number that you would like to speak on, and speakers will be called up one by one to the podium during the public hearing portion of each item. And each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak. There are five public hearing items this evening to be considered by the Planning Commission. For each item tonight, staff will provide a summary of the staff report, followed by any clarifying questions from the commission. And then the public hearing will be open for comments. Prior to the close of the public hearing, the commission may ask additional questions of staff or the applicant. However, once the public hearing portion is closed, the opportunity for public comment has ended. And so with that, Chair, staff is ready to present item 3A.
Thank you. 3A is, the address is 427 West Las Tunas Drive, planning case number CUP 25-003, conditional use permit. The applicant is Henry O. of Grapevine Central SG LLC. And Samantha, it looks like it's you.
Yes, thank you, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. The item tonight is a conditional use permit, CUP 25-003. And this is to allow the off-site sale of wine. It's a type 20 license. The license does allow for off-sale of beer and wine, but the application this evening is for wine retail. The subject property is located on the north side of West Las Tunas Drive, between North Santa Anita Street to the west and Admore Drive to the east. The subject property is Zone C1 Retail Commercial and has a general plan designation of general commercial. North of the property are R1 Zone lots, east and west are C1 Zone lots, and south are medical facility Zone lots. The subject property is approximately 10,700 square feet in size and is developed with four commercial buildings constructed in 1941. There are 15 existing parking spaces located north behind the existing buildings, accessible from an existing alleyway. Here are two images of the subject property. One is looking north, which shows the storefront of the property, and the other one is looking south, which shows the rear of the property with the parking area. The proposed business operations, as mentioned, this is for a retail wine store, is a type 20 ABC license for off-sale. The subject unit is approximately 500 square feet in size, and the proposed operating hours are 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM Saturday, and close on Sundays. As a requirement of the CUP application, there's a requirement to review the compatibility of uses. As mentioned, to the north are single-family residents, to the south are medical facilities, and east and west are other commercial-type uses. As part of the conditional use permit, there are recommended conditions of approval as part of the resolution, and it incorporates conditions of approval from the police department to ensure that the proposed use will be compatible with surrounding uses. According to the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, there are currently five active off-sale retail licenses. And again, this is issued by the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, ABC, and they are currently at the mega liquor store, Roxy's Mini Mart, Yama Seafood, Mitsua, and the 7-Eleven. And so as mentioned, recommended conditions of approval are included as part of the resolution. They require the installation of cameras near the cashier and the exit areas, also to maintain communications with the city's police department. And the police department also reserves the ability to reevaluate the use in the property for public safety, depending on the number of calls received. The application was reviewed for consistency with the city's general plan, and the consistency is with economic goal 4.1, to allow for a vibrant business community, and goal 4.2, to stop any leakage of sales tax from San Gabriel to adjacent communities. There are required findings for the conditional use permit, and they include the nature and use of the property nearby, adjacent to specific types of uses, appropriate measures to provide proper maintenance of the property, including standard property maintenance to keep the property free of junk, litter, and debris, also lighting requirements to make sure that there is adequate lighting, but also that the lighting is adequately shielded from adjacent properties, and also protection of persons from noise, illegal activity, odors, and undue lighting glare, as mentioned, onsite security, hours of operation, and limits to occupancy and use of the property. The application was reviewed per the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, and is determined exempt from the guideline section 15301 clash 1 for an existing facilities. Construction is not proposed as part of this project. It's to use the existing building and space as is. The public hearing was notice. Notice was mailed to properties within a 300-foot radius, posted at the project site. The agenda was posted at City Hall, the post office, and the library, and also advertised in the San Gabriel Sun on March 19th. So the recommendation before the Planning Commission this evening is to adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Gabriel, California, approving planning case number CUP 25-003 for a conditional use permit at 427 West Las Tunas Drive to allow for the off-site sale of wine and to grant the determination of public convenience and necessity subject to the recommended conditions of approval. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff?
Yes, Chair, I have quick questions.
Please go ahead.
Somebody remind me, like, do we have distant requirements to the school? Like, if there is a restrictions, like minimum requirements, what's the distance?
If there is a requirement is... Sorry, let me bring that up really quick.
The reason I'm talking about is that there is a Washington Elementary School just down the block, right? So we just want to make sure we are clear of that requirement.
Yes, it asks for a review of uses within 500 feet, but it's to identify those uses.
Okay, so I guess like Washington Elementary School is more than 500?
Whether or not staff looked at the radius, no, we don't have that information.
Okay.
Chair?
Yes.
If I may, we live in a couple of places, an attachment, A, there's some reference to a sale of food with, the alcohol can only be provided with a sale of food. That is an error. Obviously, this is a off-site license. It does not provide for consumption of alcohol in the store. Staff will correct that resolution on its final, assuming that there will be an approval of this item. The final copy will correct that in the resolution.
Thank you. Thank you. Feng, do you have other questions?
No further, Chair.
Any other questions from staff, for staff? Okay. Seeing none. It's now time for a public comment on this item. Is the applicant here? Can we hear from the applicant first, please?
Thank you, members of the Planning Committee. I appreciate this opportunity to speak before you today and express my hopes and aspirations for becoming a contributing member of the City of San Gabriel. At Grapevine Central, we strive to provide exceptional organic and biodynamic wine options to this community and its surrounding areas. We understand that not everyone has had the opportunity to experience and appreciate wine, and we aim to bring interest and joy to those individuals. Wine is not just a beverage. It's a means to create connections and foster relationships. We hope to become an integral part of the community by participating in local events and collaborating with businesses that may require our consultation services. We are also committed to sponsoring charity events and supporting causes that matter to the people of San Gabriel. However, our mission goes beyond just business and events. Our ultimate goal is to make genuine friends in the community. I look forward to giving advice in selecting the perfect wine for young adults going on their first date. I'm eager to help parents choose the right wines in the perfect amount for their children's weddings. I look forward to picking the ideal anniversary gift for couples seeking something special. And I'm excited to find that unique bottle for someone celebrating a landmark birthday. Throughout my journey, I've made numerous friends and connections through the shared love of wine. These experiences have enriched my life, and I'm passionate about continuing this tradition in the City of San Gabriel. At Grapevine Central, we believe that wine has the power to bring people together and create lasting memories. Our commitment to the community extends beyond our shop. We plan to participate actively in local events, support charitable causes, and collaborate with other businesses. We want to be more than just a wine shop. We want to be a cornerstone of the community, a place where people can gather, share stories, and create memories. We also offer consultation services to businesses and individuals who seek our expertise in selecting the perfect wines for their needs. Whether it's for a special event, a restaurant menu, a personal collection, we are here to help. Our knowledge and passion for wine ensures that we can provide the best advice and recommendations. In conclusion, I am deeply grateful for this opportunity to address the Planning Committee. I'm excited about the potential for Grapevine Central to contribute to the vibrant community of San Gabriel. We are committed to providing exceptional wine options, participating in local events, and building lasting relationships. Through our efforts, we hope to bring joy, interest, and a sense of community to the people of San Gabriel. Thank you for your time.
Sir, I have a couple of questions. The first one is, have you read the conditions of approval? And are you comfortable with them?
Yes.
Okay. And your program is predominantly international wines?
We are also acquiring California wineries and Oregon wineries as well, but we do have quite a list of international wines. But due to the politics that are going on now, we've made a shift to California and Oregon, more domestic wineries.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions for the?
Yeah, I have one, Chair. A very simple question. I'm fascinated to know, what is a biodynamic wine?
A biodynamic wine, it's a... So biodynamics, it's a process. It's how they... It could be, it could sound a little kooky because they do use lunar cycles, but it's also, it's also very natural, no pesticides. It's very environmental conscious. So it's a way that's made and regulated also by making wine.
Similar to organic, but with a little difference.
Similar, but a little different, yeah.
Well, thank you. I've been fascinated since I read that term. I was fascinated to learn what it meant. Thank you.
If I may, I have a quick question. Sorry. So is it the first place that you have, or you have a, this is a branch?
This would be my first place. I've worked in wine for quite a while. I've worked in many restaurants. I was the general manager of Los Angeles Wine Company for about 17 years. So this is my first project on my own.
Just wondering, like, how many, like, full-time employee are you expecting to have?
You know, it's going to be a growing process. Right now, probably, right now, to start, it's going to be me, but then eventually, you know, I'll need a delivery driver, I'll need a store clerk, so it could be maybe four to five people.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is like, in the staff report, the information that was provided, you have all the revenue projections and the costs and expenses and stuff, so I was just wondering. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this item? Have you filled out a speaker card?
I did. Should I bring it up? Hi, my name is Cindy Reimers. I reside at 138 Franklin Avenue in San Gabriel, and my husband and I are both excited about the introduction of a wine store in San Gabriel. We think it'll be a great addition to our neighborhood, and it'd be nice not to have to go to Bevmo or Costco to buy wine and could buy it locally. I guess our concern is that we would like to know what size of bottles of wine will be sold. They're applying for an ABC type 20 license, which will allow them to sell both beer and wine. And I think I'm concerned that this wine store, if not successful at selling wine and making a profit, that it doesn't turn into a mini mart or a liquor store and start selling lottery tickets and cigarettes and snacks and things like that. So I don't know if that can become part of the conditional use permit, that if there is a change in items to be sold, that the planning department could address that. But I, my husband and I definitely welcome this wine store into our community.
I can probably address that a little bit.
Yes.
In that the police department has reviewed this application, and part of what it does is it continues to ongoing review, and if things change, they have the option of bringing the CUP back to us for further action.
But do you feel the police department is, should be responsible for, let's say, the wine business, you know, is not good, okay? And they decide to start selling single-use cans of beer and six-packs of beer, and they start selling lottery tickets? I don't think the police department is going to get involved in that kind of situation and come back to the city and say, you need to review the conditional use permit.
Samantha, do you have any thoughts about this?
Yes, as provided in the public comment, if the Planning Commission wishes to add conditions of approval to the application that is the subject.
Chair, if I may?
Yes.
We're having mic problems. I'll speak loudly. That's all right. That's fine. With the understanding that if whatever use is this wine store turning into is permitted as a matter of right, in other words, it does not require a CUP or additional CUP, then Planning Commission's hands are somewhat tied with regard to making any conditions of that type. In other words, if the hours of operation and that type of conditions can be adjusted. But if the gentleman came across the counter and asked to open a mini mart in that location, and if that's permitted as a matter of right, then conditioning this project with it not becoming a mini mart may be problematic.
Are you done with me?
Well, we can't, I think the attorney has made it clear, we can't guarantee that there are conditions attached to the actual proposal. And given his experience, I think we got to give him a chance to get his feet on the ground.
I agree, but I think you have to be smart to say that who's going to monitor, besides the police department, if they start selling beer and small containers of wine and start selling lottery tickets? I mean, that's a concern to the neighborhood, too. And I think, you know, that's why nobody's speaking tonight, because everybody's excited about a wine store going in. We're just worried that that use might change.
If I may, I hear your concern there. I think, though, that the type of permit that was applied for and offered allows that if the owner so chooses to do that. And it sounds like we don't, we can't really impose any restrictions on that. So I don't think there's anything that we can do, other than we've heard the applicant's intent here, his experience. But if someone, as the city attorney said, wanted to use that building or another building nearby to open something more, much more similar to a 7-Eleven, they would be allowed to. So we're limited on what we can and cannot, you know, allow or disallow. So your concern is valid. I hear you, and I just don't think there's anything that we can do, nor I'm a little bit queasy about asking the applicant as well to do something that they don't have to. So I think intentions are good, but if there are any issues or problems that you see coming up or occurring because of this particular wine store becoming something other than it is, if you're seeing more kids loitering around there or something, or you, you know, you have every right to report that to the city, and then the city can look into it further, so.
I understand. Can the owner answer the questions about the size of wine bottles that are being sold?
Yeah, can you answer, can you respond to that?
Regular, okay.
I mean, there's also, I mean, I'm going to, I don't have, there's not many options other than that, you know, unless they want to, unless someone wants, is looking for a bigger bottle of wine, like a Magnum, like a 1.7, 1.5 liter, or the smallest. If, and the thing, problem with half bottles is that not everybody makes half bottles.
Right.
But they are fun for, but they are good for people who just want one or two glasses of wine for the evening, instead of having to open up a full bottle of wine and then not being able to drink it.
Right. I'm excited about your adventure, and I really support it. I'm just concerned, like, we don't need vagrants looking for...
Excuse me, you get about three minutes, and I think we've gone over, so, thank you. Are there any other speakers?
Chair, we do want to mention for the record that emailed comments were sent in by Cynthia Chow, and they have been provided to the Planning Commission for consideration.
Thank you for that. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. And now it's time for commissioner discussion deliberation. Commissioner Carney, would you like to start?
No, I think I'll pass until I hear more of the...
No, I think I'll pass until I hear more of the discussion. At this point, I'm very satisfied with the application, however.
All right. Well, I'll open, then, to let you know that I think this is a potentially tremendous addition to the business community in San Gabriel. It's something that we don't have. It's something that you have to go out of town now to fulfill your needs for. To be able to do it in town is a, is an absolute bonus. I hear concerns about it turning into something that it's, in the future, that it's not. We can't guarantee that. But I think, given the experience of the applicant in the wine business, I think the chances of, and his ability to market to the community, chances of being successful seem to be good, and I'm supportive. Sean?
Yeah, do, you said there was another, there was an email comment for this particular item, or, I don't know. I have this one in front of me, but, okay, I didn't see the other one, but, um, okay. Okay. Apology, I didn't, I didn't see it. Okay. No, I, so I hear the, the public comments, the written and the spoken. And I appreciate them. I don't think they're invalid concerns, but I, I also believe the applicant has the right to kind of, once he's approved, to do what he needs to, to make, to make money. So, and, and in terms of anything happening that would be vagrants here, anything like that, that, that is, is in any way, you know, counter to the conditions of approval or illegal, obviously, then, you know, that, that can be called in, or the police can investigate. But I, I just think that this person has a, a really nice vision, and they provided a very extensive business plan here, something that I think will be a very nice addition. I don't drink wine, but the idea that it's going to be not just your everyday run-of-the-bill wine store, I think is intriguing. So hopefully, it can bring some, you know, business traffic in. And like I said, I like the, the idea that the applicant also wants to give back to the community, which is, which is always good. So I, I support the project, and I, I wish it success.
Thank you.
Yes, Chair.
Go ahead.
I support the project. Thank you for choosing in San Gabriel to do the business. We appreciate that. The, the, one, uh, no, two concerns that I had was, like, it closed, it might be too close to the elementary school, but it's, I looked at it on a Google while we were talking, and it is about 900 feet away. So I, I guess, like, it satisfies the requirements. The second one was, like, since you provided us with the projections and then the cost expenses and stuff, I was trying to see how viable your business is going to be, right? Looks like you already have a plan, started with small and then going big. I guess that this, that's gonna be a good additions business to the San Gabriel. Because of that, I welcome you, and I support the project.
Thank you.
Chair, I'll add a final comment, then, if everyone else has done.
Go ahead, please.
I too support the project, and I, I think as someone who has been a wine drinker for most of my life, it's gonna be nice to be able to shop for our preferred dinner beverage without having to go to Trader Joe's or someplace else. So we welcome you. I was very impressed with your business plan, also. I, the thought and care that went into preparing that plan for us is much appreciated. So on behalf of all of us in San Gabriel, I, I hope, I wish you well, and I hope it works.
I will move approval of the motion. Of the recommendation, of staff's recommendation.
I second that.
Can we have roll call, please?
Chair Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark Morris?
Yes.
And Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
The vote is four to zero. Motion carried.
Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay. Next item is planning case number TMAP 2402, tentative tract map number 84420, 238 South San Marino Avenue. The applicant is Eric Zhang, and Marlin is ready to go.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Chair Schwartz and members of the planning commission. The public hearing item before you tonight is for tentative tract map 84420, to allow for the subdivision of airspace for residential condominium units at 238 South San Marino Avenue, planning case number TMAP 24-002. The project site is located on the east side of South San Marino Avenue, between Wedwood Avenue and West Broadway, and is currently developed with a 1,762-square-foot single-family residence. The project's, our subject property is Zoned R3 for multifamily residence, and is neared by R3 properties to the north, south, and east, and R1 to the west. The proposed project would demolish and remove any remaining structures on the property and construct three new buildings housing a total of five condominium units. Each of the five units will feature one of three predetermined floor plans, all of which will be three stories in height with private roof decks. Each of the five units will measure between 1,663 square feet and 1,905 square feet and have ground-floor garages with capacity for two cars. Vehicular access to the site will be from South San Marino Avenue by way of a proposed driveway apron. The 10-foot-wide driveway will provide access to each of the five garages, as well as two guest parking spaces located on-site. Pedestrian access to the units will be via a walkway along the north side of the property from South San Marino Avenue. The proposed project has been reviewed for compliance with the San Gabriel Municipal Code Development Standards for the R3 Zone and meets all of the requirements of the R3 Zone, including floor area ratio, height, setbacks, and open space. The Arborist Report identifies four landmark trees on the subject property. Of the four landmark trees, one tree is proposed for removal, in addition to four other non-landmark trees that will also be removed. Tree number six, as identified on the survey, is a 35-foot-tall cauculus tree and is located near the southeast corner of the property, in the footprint of a proposed driveway and directly adjacent to proposed garage and building number three. Removal of the tree is subject to a tree removal permit to be granted by the Community Development Director. The seven remaining trees will be preserved in place and incorporated into the overall landscape design of the project. The Arborist Report provides recommendations for the preservation of the landmark trees during construction, including the establishment of tree protection zones by fencing off areas within the drip line of each tree, using six-foot chain-link fences, monitoring by the consultant during demolition, grading, and excavation, utilizing the proposed driveway area as a haul route during demolition and grading, and continued irrigation. Arborist recommendations have been included as recommended conditions of approval. The project is designed in a contemporary style of architecture, similar to other multifamily developments that are approved throughout San Gabriel. Staff and the city architect have reviewed the proposed design and have found it to be consistent with the city's residential design guidelines. Each of the three buildings will be clad in smooth ducco painted in variety of neutral colors. The buildings will also feature horizontal wood siding and brick veneer to serve as an accent material and provide visual articulation. Each of the units will have individual access to private rooftop decks, and each deck will feature guardrails made of aluminum and glass. The proposed project will feature new landscaping incorporated throughout the property and anchored around a total of seven existing mature trees to enhance the site entry and the northern project boundary. The project proposes to remove five existing trees on the property and install a total of 12 new trees throughout the project site. The front yard area will feature new landscaping centered around a 90-foot-tall deodor cedar tree that will be protected in place. This area will be supplemented with two new 36-inch box western redbud trees, 5-gallon soft-cress mahonia plants, and coropia for ground cover. The side yard area along the north of the property will feature a new 5-foot, 6-inch-wide planter area to create a buffer between the adjacent property. The planter area will incorporate a variety of new trees and shrubs, including 5 24-inch box Saratoga Bay laurel trees, 15-gallon silverberry plants, and blue fescue. The general plan land use designation for the subject lot is high-density residential. This land use designation allows multifamily residential developments in Area Zone R3. Additionally, the proposed development meets the housing goals 2.1 and 2.2, as well as community design goals 10.1 and 10.4 of the City of San Gabriel general plan. The project was reviewed for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. The project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA per Guideline Section 15303, Class 3B, for new construction or conversion of small structures. This exemption applies for, to a duplex or similar multifamily residential structures totaling no more than four dwelling units. In urbanized areas, this exemption applies to apartments, duplexes, and similar structures designed for not more than six dwelling units. The item was noticed at the project site, advertised in the April 3, 2025 edition of the San Gabriel Sun, and a notice was sent to all property owners and tenants within a 300-foot radius. Tonight's agenda was also posted at City Hall, the post office, and the public library. The subdivision map act requires the City of San Gabriel to deny approval of a tentative map only if it's able to make any of the findings for denial. Based on the application, staff is unable to make any of the findings for denial. With that, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution of the planning commission of the City of San Gabriel, approving planning case number TMAP 24-002 for tentative tract map number 84420 at 238 South San Marino Avenue, subject to the recommended conditions of approval.
Thank you, Marlin. Commissioner, do we have any questions of Marlin?
Just Chair, just one quick question. How many trees are we retaining?
A total of seven. Five are being removed. There are 12 currently on the site.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Okay. Is the applicant here?
The applicant is present, yes.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing and hear first from the applicant, please.
Good evening, Chair and member of the planning commission. My name is Eric Zhang. I'm the architect for this project. I don't have any additional information to the staff report, but we have reviewed the conditions of approval as outlined in the staff report, and we agreed to all the conditions. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner, do we have any questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, opportunity for individuals who would like to speak on this item, to come forward with a speaker card and speak on the item.
Calling on Mr. Manuel Gonzalez.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I've lived in that neighborhood for 30, 38 years now. And I'm just concerned about the height of this project. It's basically a four-story building, you know, three stories with a roof access. I mean, we already have two buildings, there's one at 230 and 228 San Marino that are like three-story buildings. And the 230 San Marino, that one has a roof access, too. So I mean, I mean, at 234, there's a, a two-story condo units. And, no, those look nice. They look, they fit in with the neighborhood. I mean, there's a two-story apartment building further down the street. And so I, I think we have enough of these, but, you know, these, you know, huge buildings here, but, yeah, it, it's just the height of it bothers me, even though I think it's below the, the required, or the maximum height allowed, though, right? I think it's 27 and a half feet. Yeah, so, yeah, it's just, that, that's the only thing that bothers me about it. Because, I mean, there's already these, we got these two monstrosities already in the neighborhood, you know? And, I mean, I complained about the, the one at 230 San Marino when it, it was being proposed, and I thought, I thought it was excessive. You know, because it had the three stories, it had the fourth story with the roof access. I mean, there's even a patio umbrella up on the roof right now in the front unit. So it, that, that's the only concern I have about it, you know? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other speakers? We did get a, an email in?
Yes, Chair. The second one came through online. And it says here, this person is a neighbor. "I'm living on the opposite side of the property. Recently, there are many cars parked on the street of San Marino, both day and night, but also there's more trash, soda cans, coffee cups, napkins, bags, left on the curbside where are high traffic of car parking. My concern is that five condos might include about 10 additional cars. How can the landlord ensure the new building has enough spaces for inside parking of the 10 cars?" That's it.
And Marlin, just to clarify, the project meets parking requirements, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. There are 10 parking spaces, two per each unit, in addition to two guest parking spaces.
Thank you. Okay. We'll close the public hearing. And time for commissioner discussion. Who would like to kick this one off?
I could start, Chair.
Go ahead, Sean. Thank you.
Just briefly, I, in, in addressing a couple of public comments, I always appreciate when the public takes the time to, to look at these projects and, and provide their feedback. So thank you for that. Regarding the aesthetics and the height, unfortunately, we, cities, at least in Southern California, but across most of, I think, a significant portion of California, can't build out anymore, so we have to build up to accommodate our, our housing crisis. So I know that for single-family homeowners, that sometimes is frustrating. But, you know, we believe we, we, we share our city with everyone. I have a, I, I actually rent, but I used to have, I could walk out my back and see the, the San Ga, see the mountains. Now there's like a three-story apartment slash commercial building there, so I can't see them anymore. Made me sad, but is what it is. So I hear you. I, I do think, I think that it, the design is nice, though, and I, I foresee more, more projects like this that are gonna be higher than maybe people like. And it's not just our city, it's everywhere in the whole area. And so I just wanted to, to say that. And regarding the, the other comment with the trash, I, or the parking, not only is it adequate, but it looks like there's, there's garages there. So I, I think, it, it looks like most of the parking should, should be off the street. I think there's a couple of guest spaces, maybe on the street, that they have. So that's not uncommon. But I, I don't have an issue with, with the project, and we need the housing, so I hope it's successful.
Right, thank you.
Yes, Chair. So when I look at the package, I saw there are a few mature trees. And my concern was, like, what are we gonna do with those, right? So I guess, like, we are retaining, or keeping them on-site, and then making it work part of the, the construction, so that satisfies my concerns. And also, I looked through the package, and it kind of satisfied all the requirements, parking requirements, and the heights. So it is, is, the, the, the construction is qualified, the, all the requirements. So with that, I support the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Carney?
No comment, Chair.
I also think this project meets all the requirements, and could have been bigger according to the city code, so it's a reasonable size with on-site parking, and with a design that has sensitivity to the neighborhood and what else is there. And so, there are concerns. I recognize those, but I think overall, it's a project that's worth supporting. So, I think it'll be a good addition to San Gabriel. All right. I will make a motion to approve this 238 South San Marino Avenue. CUP.
I'll second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Chair Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner McMorris?
Yes.
And Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
The vote is four to zero. Motion passed.
Okay. All right. All right. Before we go on with the next item, we're going to take a very short break for, so, a five-minute break.
I've been wondering where I live. They haven't done that long ago.
What's that?
I said, you know, building out, single-family homes.
Yeah.
And on my street, like, we've been expecting that for, we've lived there 57 years, and it's still all single-family, but the big lots, busy street.
Yeah. When those single-family homes, they go up for sale, then developers just buy one, and they wait, and then they buy the next one, so that they have enough that they can, you know.
You know, with property that, as I say, we've lived there for 57 years. Anybody that may, the current estimate, or that, I mean, frankly.
But that's, that's.
So, the artist, that's opening the artist studio. Oh, okay. Is what? Oh, okay. Okay. One. Okay. Four. Two. Three. Four. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Ten. Eleven. Twelve. Thirteen. Fourteen. Fifteen. Sixteen. Seventeen. Eighteen. Nineteen. Twenty. Thirty. Forty. Fifty. Sixty. Seventy. Eighty. Ninety. Hundred. Twenty-one. Twenty-two. Twenty-three. Twenty-four. Twenty-five. Twenty-six. Twenty-seven. Twenty-eight. Twenty-nine. Thirty. Thirty-one. Thirty-two. Thirty-three. Thirty-four. Thirty-five. Thirty-six. Thirty-seven. Thirty-eight. Thirty-nine. Forty. Forty-one. Forty-two. Forty-three. Forty-four. Forty-five. Forty-six. Forty-seven. Forty-eight. Forty-nine. Fifty. Fifty-one. Fifty-two. Fifty-three. Fifty-four. Fifty-five. Fifty-six. Fifty-seven. Fifty-eight. Fifty-nine. Sixty. Sixty-one. Sixty-two. Sixty-three. Sixty-four. Sixty-five. Sixty-six. Sixty-seven. Sixty-eight. Sixty-nine. Seventy.
Per the California Environmental Quality Act. And it's exempt from the CEQA per section one five three zero one, class one existing facilities. Again, this is an existing building and existing unit and no new construction is proposed as part of the application. The public hearing was mailed to properties within a 300-foot radius. Posted at the subject property, the agenda was also posted at City Hall, the post office and public library. And advertising the San Gabriel Sun on April first, 2025. The recommendation before the planning commission this evening is to adopt a resolution of the planning commission of the city of San Gabriel, California. Approving planning case number CUP twenty-five dash zero zero two. For a conditional use permit at five oh one South San Gabriel Boulevard, unit one oh one, to allow for a parking reduction up to forty, but the request is ten percent. Subject to the recommended conditions of approval, and this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Are there questions of staff? Okay. Is the applicant here? Samantha?
Uh, yes. Hayden? Hayden, if you can come up to the-
Hold on, we'll open the public hearing and we'll hear from the applicant, please.
Hello?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Sorry, this is my first time, so. Yeah, so I would like to talk about this project a little bit more. Because on the plan right here, we do not provide a lot of information about the program we're having, because I think that's crucial. Because this is an educational enrichment program, so I do want to talk about that. So we are a Singapore math approach after school enrichment program. Which means that we use the Singapore method and we tailor it to American you know, educational math program, and then we're trying to fit it to this, the school curriculum, and then we enrich students' ability in math specifically right now. So do you guys know that since nineteen ninety-five, Singapore math, their national curriculum been ranked number one in the world? So that means that they must do something right. And then, so we're trying to learn from them, to see how they approach math, how they teach math, and we tailor it to the American curriculum, and then we we mostly using the CPA method mean that it's a concrete Victoria abstract method. Which mean that most of the children, they learn from visualize things, touching things, and see things in their own eyes. And then they do math with that, and then we move that to pictures. And then we move to abstract, which is like, you know, algebra letters and stuff. So this method works really well, so that's why we decided to to go forward with this project and then having this center, and we chose San Gabriel be the first location for that. This project has been really, this is the franchise, just to let you guys know. So this been very successful in Northern California, in San Francisco area, we have nine centers over there. And we have one in San Diego right now, so if we if we're allowed to open this one, this will be the first location in this area, and then and I believe that'll be a great add to the city and the area.
Have you looked at the, the conditions of approval?
Yes.
And your feeling about those?
So I believe most of this will be about the parking, because that's the main issue that we have here. Yeah, so for the business hour, because we do have two, like, the other business in that building right now, their offices, and they close at four. And then we open at three, so there will be just one hour overlap from Monday to Friday, from three to four. But for that hour, we planning not having a lot of students, because most of the, most of the schools here, they have the extra collectivity around that time, so our pick-out will be about 5:00 PM. So after four, when the other business closed, they agree that we can have the whole parking space for ourselves. And also, we have the whole parking space in the weekend.
So the conditions are okay?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have questions of the applicant?
Yes, Chair, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Fang.
What ages are you serving, like?
Yes, so for the, for this, for this curriculum, mostly will be from four. Four to, up to Algebra I, so I would say grade seven or eight. And then we do have, so from that, from four, from four years to grade seven or grade eight. That can be the tutoring one, so we do the coaching thing, we, like, one and one or one and two maximum, and then if the students decided to go forward with us for further education, like, you know, when they go to Algebra II, Geometry, anything, it's going to be a classroom size. So it's not going to be like one and one kind of thing anymore, it's going to be a classroom, but we limit the class to be very small size, which is five to eight students per class, so we can focus on more the students instead of, you know, trying to make it big and make money, so.
Thank you. My, my question would be, like, toward the concern of the parking reductions, right, so if you, if you can, like, respond to, like, how you can solve that problem. Now, so so you said from the four years old all the way to seventh or eighth grades?
Yes.
Are you providing after-school, pickup from the school? Or how the, how the students are going to get to your center?
Um, so it's gonna be, sorry, excuse me, it's gonna be parents drop-off.
It's gonna be parents drop-off, so there would be a lot of cars coming towards your center. Like, there's a, like you said, there's a one-hour overlap from three to four. There might be, like, overwhelm the parking spaces.
I would say not quite, because we, we responsible for making schedules, and we have, like, like, a certain number of students can come in at a time, so we can control that. So for now, with the, the location we have and the staff that we have, so from three to four, which is the overlap time, we're gonna have maximum four to five students on that hour only, on the weekdays. We're gonna have more students, but the pick-out will be 5:00 PM, which is, we have the whole space for ourselves.
Okay, okay, so that, that kind of kind of like calming down a little bit, right? Like, so from three to four, you are expecting like, very few kids being drop-off?
Yes.
Right?
Because we decided to spend that time to work with a few number of kids, and it's gonna be like a prep time only, also. So it, the, the number of students coming in will be limited, and then the pick-out will be 5:00 PM and beyond that, yes.
And then how many students are you expecting? Like, what is your projection between three to four?
So from three to four, I would say five, five max. Yes, because we want to spend that hour for like a prep time also, and then, you know, grading homeworks and preparing for the lesson for the whole weekend stuff.
And then during the peak, like, like you call it, like, after five, what is your, like, projections of kids coming to your center?
I would say ten to fifteen.
Ten to fifteen?
Yeah, that's the whole.
What is the maximum that you can have at your center?
So the maximum capacity will be twenty.
Twenty?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. No further, Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the public hearing is open, if anybody would like to speak about this item.
And Chair, for the record, an email was received from Kathleen Cardenas, and that was distributed to the planning commission.
Thank you. Seeing those speakers, we'll close the public hearing. And have discussion on this item. Fang, you want to go first?
Sure, Chair, thank you. So the main, the main concern that I have is the variance for the parking requirement reductions, right? After talking, after listening to the staff report, there is a mention of nearby bus stops. However, the, the school, the ages that, that the, the tuitions, this, you know, educational center is trying to serve is from four years old all the way to seven or eighth, so that might not be helpful to put it into our considerations about the reductions. However, after talking to the applicants, looks like we don't have to worry that much about the parking overwhelming during the the peak hour per se, because of the the offices that occupy on the, on the lot is going to be closed by four o'clock. So be, so because of that information, I feel confident that I can support this project.
Thank you. Sean?
Oh, um, one of my best friends, they finished high school in Singapore, and they have never stopped bragging about how good the education was there, so I, and all I know is she's way better at math than me, so I, I, I don't have an issue with this project, and I hope that it helps a lot of young students to, and to grasp and enjoy math better than I did when I was at eight, so.
Thank you. Yeah, I think the, the, one of the benefits of this project in addition to the education is that it's not going to be in terms of size, it's not going to be overwhelming. Fifteen, twenty is a reasonable size for a tutoring center at a max capacity, so I think the it makes sense to give the conditional use permit. And the the parking variance, the conditional use permit in this case, so so I support it. George?
I tend to support the project also, although as someone who taught high school math for thirty-five years, I might take exception to the way it's taught here. A lot of my students are very successful, but on the other hand, I see no reason to oppose the project either, so I, I tend to support it.
Somebody like to make a motion?
I make the motions to approve.
Hey, I'll second it. Let's have roll call, please.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner McMorris?
Yes.
And Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
The vote is four to zero, motion passed.
Good luck to you. Okay, the next item is planning case number variance twenty-five dash oh oh one. The, two forty-one North San Marino Avenue, the applicant is Shi Shen Lu and Shi Lu, Shi Shen Su. If I didn't butcher those, Samantha, then
Check the first question.
I'm sorry?
No, that's correct. That's correct, Chair.
Go ahead, Samantha.
Yes, thank you, Chair. As mentioned, this is four two one North San Marino Avenue. The subject property is located south of Hermosa Drive, between between North San Anita Street to the west and North San Marino Avenue to the east. The subject property is zoned R1 single-family residence and has a general plan designation of low-density residential. To the north, south, east and west of the property are R1-zoned lots. The lot is approximately eight thousand nine hundred square feet in size, and is currently developed with a two thousand five hundred square feet one-story, single-family residence constructed in nineteen forty-seven. The request again is to construct a fifteen-inch-tall block wall abutting the property lines. And the variance request, the code requires that block walls be set back thirty inches to provide landscaping. In this particular case, the request is to build the block wall abutting the property line. This is a photo of the subject property, looking west at the property at the top left corner. And then looking east at the property on the, on the, what's the, west, on the east side of the lot, and in a close-up view of the existing wall, this is an after-the-fact application, so it's something that the property owner has constructed. This is a view of adjacent properties to the south of the subject property on San Marino Avenue. It's to show that there are a couple of properties that have a similar condition. In order to grant a variance, the planning commission must make certain findings such as special circumstances to the property, including lot size, shape, topography, location. In this particular case, the subject property as shown is a triangular-shaped lot. And there are very few properties within the city of San Gabriel that is triangular-shaped, the majority of the properties are standard rectangular shape. There is a minor grade difference of fifteen inches that was shown in the cross-section. And then also, a second finding would be to not constitute a grant of special privileges. And as shown, there are other existing properties that have a similar condition to the application this evening. And also that the application will not result in material damage to adjacent properties. And in this particular case, the wall is located primarily along the corner of the property and is not abutting any adjacent properties. And also that the applicant, the application is consistent with the general plan. And as mentioned, consistency per the general plan community design goal ten point one to create expectations that San Gabriel will accept nothing but the highest quality in architecture, landscaping, design and streetscape, and also ten point five to build neighborhoods centered in such a way as to reinforce the value of the neighborhoods. Staff did include an additional condition of approval requiring that the cement block wall be finished with a stucco finish, just to provide a little bit of a higher-quality finish to the wall. The application was reviewed per the California Environmental Quality Act, section one five three zero three for new construction of small structures. And notice of the public hearing was mailed to properties within a three-hundred-foot radius, as well as posted on the project site. The agenda was posted at City Hall, the library, and the city's website, and there was a publication on April first, twenty twenty-five. And the recommendation before the planning commission this evening is to adopt a resolution of the planning commission of the city of San Gabriel approving planning case number, the variance VAR twenty-five dash zero zero one, for a variance to allow for the construction of the block wall along the front property lines without providing the thirty-inch setback for landscaping at two four one South San Marino Avenue, subject to the conditions of approval, and this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Are there questions of staff?
Couple of questions. Is it rendering or is it actually built?
It's actually built.
It's actually built?
Yes.
Okay. So after the fact, the applicant is applying for permits?
That's correct.
Okay. Are we, so whatever we see, are we concerned with the, the ordinance that we had it before us? I think a couple of months ago, is there any conflict or concern with that ordinance? Like, the front yard requirements, the side and rear requirements and stuff?
No.
No, okay. So the height that we see right here is, that's it, like, it's not going to go up any higher?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Nothing further, Chair?
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, you said they're going to have a stucco finish on that wall there, then, is that there?
That's a recommendation from staff.
Okay, all right.
Is that recommendation a condition? I mean, it's-
Yes, it's, it's added as part of exhibit one this evening to the resolution, but if the planning commission feels the existing condition is acceptable, then that can be removed.
Okay, thank you.
Is the applicant here today, Samantha?
Uh, yes.
Okay, let's open, let us open the public hearing and hear from the applicant, please. Come, come ahead, please.
Oh, hi, hello, can you, oh, yes. Okay, so, so good evening, Commissioner. Thank you for the chance to speak. I just want to just quickly explain why I'm asking to keep the the blocking wall as it right now, instead of moving thirty inches backward. There's actually like four main reasons. The main, the first reason is the safety and soil control. Because my yard, the soil level itself is actually higher than the sidewalk, like fifteen inches higher. So that's why we have set this block wall. The purpose is actually the blocking the, the water from rain or watering the, the yard wash the dirt onto the sidewalk. This could make the people that's passing by, like, sleep or fail. So, so that will really keep the things safe and clean, and especially that this is really high-traffic area, and there's also a school on the other side of the street. And the second reason is the unusual shape of this property. Because if you can see that this property is actually a triangular shape. Corner lot with two street, if I have to move the wall, like, back into thirty inches for both side, I will lose really a tremendous, tremendous amount of space. And that will really affect how I use the yard, and also significantly lower the value of my property. Also, the third reason is the, the roots that's underneath the soil. There were, there were actually a, a big tree, an old tree that's in my yard, and the roots go really deep and wide. Moving the wall, meaning that we have to cut into those roots, that were really very hard and expensive and require a lot of work. And the fourth reason is that we are just basically following the, the old layout. That because the previous owner already had the hedges and the fence right on the boundary line, which is the, the current, like, the position. So we just build a wall along the sideline to match the original look. And also that, as you can see, there's another, the photo for the adjacent neighborhood, you can see other houses in the neighborhood also have the same layout, so so we're just following that. Yeah, so, yeah, you, the overall that my goal is simply to make my property clean, safe and beautiful, not just for my family, but just help to improve the look and feel of the whole neighborhood area. I truly believe that keeping the wall like this will support that goal and also benefits the community overall. And thank you very much for your time and considering my request.
The conditions of approval you've read, they're okay?
I'm sorry?
The conditions of approval?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Are okay?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have questions of the applicant?
Yes, Chair, I have a, just one question. It could be to the, to the property owner or to the staff. Just want to make sure, sometimes, right at the corner with this weird, like, shape, the right-of-way could be tricky, right? So is it the, the wall that we are seeing, are we, the, under consideration is within the private right-of-way? Can you confirm that?
Yes, it is within the private property, but staff can also follow up with the Public Works Department to confirm the right-of-way with.
Okay. So this question is going to be for you. Are you planning to make it any higher than what we see in the picture?
No.
No, so, okay, so it's going to be a retaining wall, basically?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, by the way, welcome to the neighborhood. I pass by it almost every day, drop off my kids. You, you clean up the yard very nicely, right?
Yes.
What happened to the big tree there? Like, I used to see the big tree there before.
Yeah, that, that's actually a long story, that, because there's an issue with that big tree, especially that we do notice that there's a, like, when, when the worker came, came up on the tree, they see there's a big crack on the, on the main branches. That's why we, we cut it off at that time. And, I mean, it is, I'm really glad that we actually did cut it off, because the windstorm that hit a couple of months ago.
Okay.
There's a couple of branches dropping off from the other neighborhood, but we, we did cut it before that happens. So that's actually a fortune that we did cut the tree.
Yeah, I'm a tree guy, so when I see that tree gone, like, it make me feel a little sad, but, yeah.
Yeah, but right now, we will definitely make the, make the yard much better. Right now, it's, it's not done yet. We're gonna make it, put flowers, make the, make the grass, everything will make it much better after a couple of months.
Are you planning to replant that trees or any?
We had a discussion with, with, with the City Hall that we will do another tree, like a oak tree.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
On the property?
On the property, in the, in the front yard.
Okay, all right, nothing further, Chair?
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments or questions from the, for the applicant?
Just a comment, I, I, when I read this report, I drove by the property, I'm very familiar with that neighborhood because I go through it all the time. I think the wall, as it is, looks great. If you're gonna stucco it, well, that's great too, but I, I certainly can't see any reason at all to require moving it or anything. It, it looks fine, I don't think there's any right-of-way impediment or so I'm, I'm very inclined to support this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
This is a public hearing, is there anybody else who would like to speak on this item?
Hello, my name is Xiao Wei. Actually, I, I'm the neighbor just across the street. I come here just to support the project. I really like the block wall, and because there is a couple of reasons. I think most important for me is for the safety. Because, you know, before there is, everybody knows there is a lot of big trees almost falling down, the tree has to be get rid of it. But when we remove the tree, there is bigger roots all around. I also have the tree, and, you know, all the ground is not soil, almost is tree roots. There is no way to cut it off and put it back. So that's why, because for the block wall, it's not only look nice, also for the safety. So that's why I come here to support the project.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other speakers? Did we get something?
Uh, yes, that was from the gentleman that just spoke.
Okay, excellent. Seeing that no other speakers, we'll close the public hearing and have other deliberations, discussions amongst the commissioners. I think what George said makes a lot of sense in terms of supporting this. And I think that it's important to support neighbors that are trying to do things to beautify their lot and help the neighborhood, so seems like it's a, almost a no-brainer. So Sean, do you have any comments?
Oh, yeah, just a couple. I, I initially had the same inquiry, it wasn't clear to me in reading it initially, whether, that the wall was already built and how tall it would be. This is, I was envisioning something, you know, five feet tall, and I thought, oh, man, I don't know how that's gonna fit into, you know, a neighborhood, but even though we're not design review, so, but I was, yeah, I, I think that it, it looks very nice. I, I do think the stucco will, will make it look even nicer, so I appreciate the applicant being willing to do that. And I, and just, I also have a lot of sympathy for the, for the applicant, given that they bought the property and there was already a fence there, and this was what was there, and now they're being told, oh, you, you have to spend tons of money to completely redo everything. And I think it looks like even in the, the drawing, that like some of, it's, I mean, that would really diminish their amount of yard if they had to push it back, so given all those circumstances, I think it's appropriate to approve of this. So, given all those circumstances, I think it's appropriate to, uh, approve of this, uh, application, so.
So I'll, I, I will accept a motion on this item.
I will so move. Approval.
All right, a second?
Sure, Sean.
Okay. Did you second it?
Uh, actually, George did, so.
I thought I moved.
Oh, you moved?
Then I seconded.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chair Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner McMorris?
Yes.
And Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
The vote is four to zero, motion passed.
All right. Last item tonight is Planning Case Number Var- Variance, V A R twenty-five dash O two, six-one-nine West Las Tunas Drive. The applicant is Rebecca Rudolph. And Marlon, you're batting cleanup.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Chair Schwartz and members of the Planning Commission. The public hearing item before each tonight is for parking variance to allow for an artist studio located at six-one-nine West Las Tunas Drive, Planning Case Number V A R two-five dash zero-zero-two. Uh, the subject property is located in the retail commercial, or C-one zone, and has a general planned land use designation of general commercial. The adjacent properties in all directions are Zone C-one. The property measures approximately sixty-five hundred square feet and is currently developed with two detached commercial structures, with the primary structure measuring three-thousand square feet, and the rear structure measuring approximately two-thousand and forty square feet. Each of the two structures were, were built in nineteen thirty-six, according to Los Angeles County Assessor records. The primary structure along West Las Tunas Drive is a single-story building built along the south and west property lines. The secondary structure is located at the rear of the property with approximately six-foot setbacks in the rear and three-foot setbacks along the sides. Uh, vehicular access to the property is by way of a nine-foot, ten-inch-wide driveway along the east side of the primary structure. The two buildings are separated by a fourteen-foot, ten-inch-wide courtyard area, with the remaining area of the property being occupied by the existing structures. The proposed artist studio would be owned and operated by the property owner, who is a professional artist specializing, specializing in large-scale paintings. The owner typically works alone on-site with a part-time assistant present primarily when the owner is away. The studio will not be open to the public and will only be used for viewings by appointment. The business operation plan is provided as attachment C to your report. The primary building features an open floor plan with a staircase for access to a mezzanine area, which has an existing bathroom and kitchenette, uh, in the mezzanine area. The secondary structure located at the rear of the property is a combination of single-story and a two-story building with a wall separating the single-story and two-story sections of the building. The ground floor of the two-story section can be accessed by a pedestrian entrance, as well as a roll-up garage door leading to an open garage area. The garage area on the ground floor has a clearance measuring sixteen feet, uh, nine inches by twenty-nine feet. This area serves as the only available on-site parking space. The second floor of the building is identified as being an office area, while the single-story portion of the building is designated for proposed art studio overflow. In order to grant the variance, the Planning Commission must make the findings shown on the screen, uh, and to summarize, the request for the variance is with regard to the inability to meet the parking requirement for the proposed use. According to San Gabriel Municipal Code, uh, one-five-three-point-two-two-zero, a dance studio, a karate studio, and the like would require one parking space for every hundred-and-fifty gross square feet. As proposed, the studio, uh, would require twenty-four parking spaces and three additional spaces for the office area, for a total of twenty-seven required on-site parking spaces. Due to constraints resulting from how the site is developed, there's only one parking space with no potential for additional spaces. The applicant is requesting a parking variance to be able to operate as an art studio with an ancillary office space, using only the one existing on-site parking spaces, as well as on-street parking to fulfill their parking requirement. Uh, the subject property has been developed to its current state since nineteen thirty-six, with building permits reflecting the legal status of both existing structures. Uh, until two thousand seventeen, the property and its commercial businesses operated as non-conforming uses and were allowed to continue operation so long as the use was not discontinued for a period of a hundred and twenty consecutive days or more. Uh, since two thousand seventeen, the property has remained unoccupied, which lapses the non-conforming status. The San Gabriel Municipal Code requires all uses to provide on-site parking based on the parking table provided in Section one-five-three-point-two-two-zero. Uh, as it's currently developed, again, the property would not be able to satisfy the parking requirement for any of the land, of the uses listed in the use table, and any attempt to provide additional parking would require substantial demolition to the existing structures. Uh, general planned land use designation is general commercial. This land use designation allows all forms of retail, service, office, recreation slash amusement, and other commercial businesses which provide goods and services for the local population, and those businesses which are targeted towards visitors and commuters. The proposed use also supports economic development goal four-point-one to create a vibrant business community, uh, as well as community design goals ten-point-two and ten-point-five. The project was reviewed for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. This project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act per guideline Section one-five-three-zero-three, Class Three, for new construction or conversion of small structures. The item was noticed at the project site, advertised in the April third, twenty-twenty-five edition of the San Gabriel Sun, and a notice was sent to all property owners and tenants within a three-hundred-foot radius. Tonight's agenda was also posted here at City Hall, the post office, and the public library. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Gabriel, approving Planning Case Number V A R two-five dash zero-zero-two for a variance at six-one-nine West Las Tunas Drive, to allow an artist studio at six-one-nine West Las Tunas Drive, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. Uh, that concludes the presentation.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Go ahead, Sean.
Uh, what, what, what does that mean, that, uh, non, the non-conforming status laps? What, could you explain that, that?
Yeah.
I think you said twenty-seventeen or something like that?
Yeah, so just for background, non-conforming, uh, a non-conforming status is for, um, structures or uses that were conforming at the time that they were built, but due to changes in the, in the code, uh, no longer conform to the, the more recent code, um, development standards or designation. Previous businesses at this location, up until two thousand seventeen, operated as non-conforming uses. However, one, uh, standard for non-conforming uses is that they, they need to remain, uh, in continuous operation, uh, and can't be vacant or inoperable for a period longer than a hundred and twenty-eight days. That time period, when the, when the business went, the most recent business went out of business there in two thousand seventeen, they did not ref, they have not refilled the space since, uh, therefore lapsing the non-conforming condition.
Okay. And just to clarify, I, the, the, the art studio will be the main building in the front as proposed, and in the back is a overflow studio, and then there's, I guess there's office space as well? And that, just, I, I don't know how any business with no parking had anything there, but the, uh, that office space then won't be rented out to another business or anything? Then you'd have these parking issues again, I think, right?
Correct. It will not be leased out to another, uh, tenant. This will be used for, uh, office, for, for the, for the property owner.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Any other questions of staff?
Yes, Chair.
Go ahead, Frank.
Um, hey, Marlon, uh, the, I'm looking at the Google map. There's a lot of parking spaces. What's it belongs to? It's, it belongs to the bank?
So the parking spaces, the parking lot in the rear is private parking that does belong to the bank, which is the building you see on the, on the west, on the, on the area over there. Okay. They've actually recently restricted access, uh, from Sycamore Drive as well.
Okay, okay. So, uh, the, the project, uh, cannot use those parking spaces, right? Is that, is it, is that what my understanding is?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, um, and then you said that there's only one on-site parking space?
Yes, it's in the ground floor of the two-story section of the rear building. So I've got the site plan there.
Okay, and the, the required parking spaces are twenty-seven spaces?
Twenty-seven spaces, based on the size of the building, yes.
Okay, so, uh, my math is not good, right? So can you tell me, like, what is the reductions of a percentage-wise that we are asking?
Uh, I don't know the exact percentage, but, um, it's over forty, which is the maximum that's allowed with a conditional use permit. So that's why the request for the variance.
So there's like a ninety, ninety-something percent?
Yes.
Very close.
Ninety-something percent?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, all right, uh, nothing further, Chair?
Thank you.
Marlon, you said the building has been vacant for, since twenty-seventeen?
That's correct. Our business license records show that there has not been an operable business there since twenty-seventeen.
What was there before, do you know?
Uh, it was a bridal store.
Oh, okay. And, but there's been nothing there for the last eight years?
Correct.
It's just, it's just sitting empty?
Correct. It may be that the property owner, at, at various times, used it for personal storage, but no businesses have been, have been operating there.
And am I to understand that the applicant here, that this will not be a business that's open to the public, there will be no public access, or, I mean, customers not coming in or anything like that?
Uh, there will be viewings only by appointment, but during, there will not be general business hours, no.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Chair, if I may, I would like to add, uh, a couple questions. So, the staff is recommending to approve?
Correct.
And we are looking at nine, ninety-something percent reduction in parking requirements? How could, how can the staff can, uh, like, recommend to approve? Can you give us the, uh, the, uh, kind of, the logic behind of it?
Sure. So, um, one of the findings required for granting a variance is that there are speci- uh, unique or special circumstances for the property. In this case, the way that it's been developed for nearly one hundred years, um, would prohibit, uh, under our current parking requirements, for any business to operate at this location. Uh, again, only one parking space exists on-site. Uh, even the most, or the least restrictive, uh, use based on parking calculations, which would be a furniture store, requires one, uh, parking space per five-hundred square feet. Uh, if you only include the business or the building, the primary building in the front, that would still require six parking spaces, which currently do not exist and cannot exist on this property, without demolition.
Okay, um, is the owner or property owner have an alternative, like, to kind of come up with a visitor parking, uh, spaces?
They have not proposed an alternative, no.
Okay, thank you.
Is the applicant here?
Uh, the representative is here, yes.
Okay. Let's open the public hearing and hear from the representative of the owner. Of the applicant, please.
Hello, I'm Rebecca Rudolph, I'm the architect on the project, and, um, the client basically purchased this building. She is, she's an artist of some renown, she's having success selling her paintings. And she purchased the building with the intent of using it as her art studio. She creates paintings that are sometimes up to like eighteen feet tall and, you know, many feet wide, they're quite large. And she purchased the building with the understanding that she could use it for this purpose and, you know, was unaware of the parking requirements and all of the, um, the municipal code requirements. So, um, we got involved to assist her to apply for the parking variance, and then, yeah, we talked to the planning department and essentially, um, submitted this application. So the, going through the existing permits, um, the original building in the rear on the ground floor was permitted as a garage, um, and therefore that's the, essentially the parking that's been existing on the site since it was built. And that's why we're requesting the variance. We, um, talked to, I guess Christine, who is the head of the planning department, um, who, at the time, did not make any suggestions to us, is that we would need to provide for visitor parking, um, and that's why we're just requesting a single space. Most of the time, the artist is there by herself, she has a part-time assistant, who, um, is actually here with us today, and, um, yeah, they are not often there, basically. And she apologizes, she couldn't be here, she's out of the country. She does travel quite a bit also for her work.
Anybody have a questions of the architect?
Yes.
Go ahead.
If I may, um, so, what I'm thinking is like, there is only a singles, uh, space for the project. Like I previously mentioned, it's going to be ninety-something percent reduction you're requesting. That is not ten percent, that is not twenty percent, right? It's almost a hundred percent. Would you be willing to come up with an alternative, just to come up with like, a, a couple spaces? Arrangement can be made with the, the banks or nearby businesses or something that you can provide it to the, uh, the city staff, that, hey, we make this arrangement, right? There's not a single, uh, space anymore, we have multiple spaces, right? If there is a visitor, they can park here and here and here, right? So, would you be willing to do that?
We'd have to ask the owner, who's not here with us. I think that she would prefer to not have to incur that expense, uh, if she can avoid it. I do think that if the city were to allow tandem parking in the driveway, um, that would probably be the easiest thing that we could propose. Uh, there is a gate that she's planning on replacing, so potentially parking could happen behind the gate, not in front of it. But I'm, you know, I think that that probably doesn't meet the standard parking requirements, and that's why we didn't propose it.
Uh, you?
Okay. Anybody else have any questions of the, the architect? Go ahead, Sean.
The envision, um, essentially, this is going to be a personal studio, it sounds like, and so there won't be a lot of comings and going, but you do mention there'll be some private viewings by invitation. Do you have a sense of when those would be? I ask because you could do them during peak hours, during the business day, or those viewings could be on non-peak hours in the evenings or something like that, or on the weekends, where you are going to have some more traffic? Is, is it going to be easier to, for that traffic to park on the street for a limited amount of time? So, do you have any idea, um, on kind of how that, that whole process, uh, might work? Or what they think, how they think they'll do that, and what time of day?
Yeah, I will say it's, it's not very often, and it's likely like a single person, the gallerist coming to her space, where she has a gallery representation. So it's not going to be used as an art gallery, it's not going to have, you know, many people coming and viewing. But based on her work hours, my guess would be later in the day. That it would most likely happen.
Okay. Any other questions of? Yeah.
Um, I, one thing I did want to note is that it seems that the, this use is not specifically, accounted for exactly in the code, and so I think it's a bit of a challenge. It's allowed, um, you know, it is a commercial use, and there are some similar things, but in terms of comparing it, for example, to a dance studio or a karate studio, um, it's not really a similar use because it's her, by herself there. And I know it seems potentially strange that such a large property is only being used by one person, but that, in this case, is actually what it, you know, the, the truth of the matter is, she makes these really large paintings, and she needs all the space to be able to do it.
So I just want to throw out, throw the numbers, right? So you, you have a, a single space, and then, uh, what I'm proposing is two additional, uh, spaces, uh, for visitors or staff, right? So with that number, three out of, uh, the required twenty-seven spaces, that is still, we are talking about big numbers of reductions that, right, that, that we are, have to consider, right? So that is like eighty-nine percent reductions, right? So, I, I totally believe, and I feel confident that if you can come up with a couple spaces for additional spaces, you know, for, for the, uh, commission to consider. for additional spaces, you know, for the commission to consider.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's open, the public hearing is open, everybody. Are there anybody who would like to speak on this item? Okay. If you fill out a speaker card?
Thanks. Good evening. I'm, again, Cynthia Reimers. I reside at 138 North Franklin. I have a few questions about the property at 619 West Las Tunas Drive. I'm very excited to have seen that the building has had some new windows installed, but it doesn't seem like the whole front of the building has new windows. And it looks probably to me like the windows were upgraded and maybe not permitted. Maybe the representative can address that, or the city staff can address that with you. One of the things that bothers me about this property is that there's no address on the property. It seems like that that should be required, and also there's no signage indicating what the building is going to be. And I understand that you can't force signage, but, I mean, an artist is using that as a studio. Wouldn't that be nice for the community to know that there's something interesting going on in that building? Right now, it looks vacant. The windows are covered with paper or falling-down draperies, and, to be honest with you, it just looks like the building is vacant still. The driveway to the east of the property has litter, the walls are graffitied, and that's disturbing to somebody who lives in the neighborhood and walks down Las Tunas, that we're excited to see an artist studio. I've met the owner there, her paintings are just amazing. But personally, I'm looking for someone to take care of the property, too. As far as the parking, is it possible that they can use the parking lot, the public parking lot, on the south side of Las Tunas? If that would be available for visitors, or once in a while where she would have somebody come and visit the artist studio? And that would be the parking lot that's behind Casa Calderon. It is a public parking lot, and it should be able to be used by, potentially, by this artist studio. So I'm concerned about the graffiti, again. I'm concerned about how the building looks from the outside to the community. But I welcome the idea that we have a new artist in our community, and her work is just amazing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Chair, what is before the commission tonight is a request for a variance on the parking issue.
That is correct.
The other items are not before the commission.
Correct. Okay. We'll close the public hearing and have commission deliberation. First of all, Jackie, did we get any other?
Chair, no, we didn't.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner comments?
I'll begin, Chairman.
Go, please, George.
I see the building has been sitting there, unused and empty, for eight years. I can't see imposing any additional restrictions that might lead to it being empty and unused for another eight years. Obviously, it's not an ideal situation without the parking, but I don't see that that's going to be a major issue to be. Given what we know about the proposed use and all of that, I just can't see, I can't see what would be gained by denying this applicant this variance. It just doesn't make any sense to me in terms of what we're trying to do for the city. As far as I'm concerned, if we can get our property leased and have somebody in there using it to some productive purpose, that's better than letting it sit empty. That's my comment.
I completely agree. That makes perfect sense to have a use that's especially as productive as an artist can be. So, yes. Sean?
It is a really weird, unusual request, but I can't see any other type of request being made here, given the circumstances, that this was built a hundred years ago. And if we continue to enforce that ordinance on this particular property, I don't know how it will ever be either bought or used for anything. I think that that really just puts the dale in the coffin to a property like this unless someone, unless a developer wants to come in, bulldoze it, and spend a bunch of money to do something. Given that this is an artist, I think the situation is rather unique. I do think the fact that it's just for them to do their craft, it's probably a nice place for that. You know, whether they open it up to the community or not is their prerogative. I don't want to get in any way of dictating how they have to do their craft and what they prefer. I hear Commissioner Lee on the parking in terms of, oh, you know, at least a couple. I think if it's viable, I would consider that. I just, I'm so worried it's not really viable, and the amount that they might have to pay the nearby bank to utilize those parking spots, given that this is an artist and it's not a chain going in here with a lot of money. That concerns me, and I don't, I also sympathize with the fact that they didn't know about this until after they bought the property, which is kind of heartbreaking. They probably would not have bought the property had they known that. So for all of those reasons, you know, I'm inclined to approve it, but I certainly, I see your point, Commissioner Lee. If there was an easy way forward on that, I would be, I think I'd be open to that, but I worry there's not. And I worry the delay as well, and them trying to figure out how to do that might hinder what they want to do there. Those are my comments.
So I hear my fellow commissioners' comments. I do kind of agree, but not exactly. The reason is that we have the code, right? The code is the code, but the variance is before us to consider. But how much variance do you want, right? The staff presented to you that the required is twenty-seven, and it has only a single space to use. On the other hand, if you think about, for, to become a successful business, you might have visitors, right? Like the architect says, they might have showings once in a while. What's going to happen when there's a showing, right? Are you, yes, there's some spaces, could be on the streets, or like, or park on the red. But there's going to be putting strings on the public right-of-way or nearby the residence. But what I am thinking is, you know, like, coming up with a couple spaces, looking forward for a successful business, you know, coming up, make arrangement with the nearby business property owners, that will kind of like be a better business plans, you know, to move forward. That's what I'm thinking. With single space, I don't feel comfortable approving it.
I want to make a motion to approve the variance on 619 West Las Tunas Drive. I make a motion to approve the variance as proposed.
I'll make the motion to approve. Oh, I'm sorry, I second that.
Roll call, please.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
No.
Commissioner McMorris?
Yes.
And Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Okay, the vote is three yes, one no, motion passed.
That's all the items we have tonight. Are there comments from the planning manager tonight?
Uh, no comments, Chair.
Comments from commissioners? It's worth noting that both Commissioner Lee and myself were reappointed by the council last week.
Yes, congratulations and welcome back.
Agreed. Congratulations to both.
Seeing no other items, we will adjourn the meeting, this planning commission meeting, to the next regular meeting on Monday, May 12, 2025, at 6:30 here in this location. Meeting is adjourned.